The measure on the appointments?
Not yet.
Okay.
Did somebody say twenty-nine speakers?
Yes, and sixty-four emails.
Don't read all the, all the emails, just tell us who what pro and who's con.
But.
Oh, wait a minute.
No, I, I. Give me a copy of that entire thing, please. Okay.
Cece.
Um.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
At the back of A six.
Okay.
Hey, guys, um, I guess somebody in the chamber, I just received a text message from somebody who was in our Zoom meeting, who was signed up to speak, who said they just got kicked out. So not that anybody kicked them out, but just heads up if, if there's some folks that signed up that disappear, we may be having some issues, so.
We didn't, yeah. There was a Mr. Rife that was, well, he wasn't there, the engineer, okay. Are, are we, um?
Yes.
We're live, okay, we're live there, let's get the meeting going.
All right, welcome everybody to Roanoke City Council's regular session for June fifteenth, twenty twenty at seven o'clock P M. Participation will be by electronic communication pursuant to Amendment twenty-eight to House Bill twenty-nine, section four dash zero point oh one G, chapter twelve eighty-three, Virginia Acts of Assembly, twenty twenty, section two dash, two point two dash thirty-seven oh eight, two, eight, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, ordinance number four one seven oh three, oh three two seven twenty, and resolution number four one seven oh four, oh three two seven two oh. At this time, I will ask that Clerk, Ms. Susan Ford, to please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Osborne?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And Equam is present. All seven members of the City Council present. As permitted by Amendment twenty-eight to House Bill twenty-nine, twenty twenty session, section four dash zero point oh one G of chapter twelve eighty-three, Virginia Acts of Assembly, twenty twenty session, Virginia Code, section two point two dash thirty-seven oh eight, twenty eight, and fifteen point two dash fourteen thirteen. We will be led, uh, in prayer, our invocation will be delivered by Vice Mayor, Mr. Joseph Cobb, and I will follow, uh, his invocation with the prayers of the.
Talk anything else?
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, uh, will you pray with me? Loving Spirit, for everything that we are experiencing and feeling, it is real. For everything that we hope and dream for, it is real. For every longing, for every relationship, for every community and neighborhood, and for all of this land that we call home. We give you thanks and we recognize the work we have yet to do together. And may you give us strength, courage, tenacity, grit, and fierce resolve to do what you've set before us. In your holy and many names, I pray, amen.
They just want to have audio for everybody except for the.
You want me to pledge allegiance? The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation Thank you so much. All right. Well, welcome everybody to our evening session. We've been in council since, uh, really about one thirty today. And so, uh, again, we look forward to hearing from our citizens tonight. The first order of business, I think, is to, uh, certify our closed meeting. And could I call on Councilmember Best Fitch to, to read the certifications, certification motion and have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move that each member of Roanoke City Council certifies, to the best each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under chapter thirty-seven of Title two point two, Code of Virginia, Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was conducted through electronic communication means was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Thank you, just a second.
June Osborne, second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. Ms. Callahan, those names that we mentioned in a, uh, closed session regarding the work on the committee, we're not approving those at this time, are we?
We are going to take those up as item B as in boy tonight after items A, one through six.
Okay, all right, thank you. Our tonight's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on R V T V Channel Three on Thursday, June eighteenth at seven o'clock P M, and Saturday, June twentieth at four o'clock P M, and video stream through Facebook Live at facebook dot com slash Roanoke V A. Council meetings are offered in closed caption for the hearing impaired. All right. The first item on our agenda is public hearing. A request of Eric Ferris to vacate, discontinue, and close by barricade a portion of an alley between Sixteenth Street Northwest and Seventeenth Street Northwest, parallel to Shenandoah Avenue Northwest, to prevent access from unauthorized individuals. Eric Ferris is the petitioner and the spokesperson. There is one measure and ordinance.
Phil Best Fitch, I move the ordinance.
June Osborne, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the alteration and closing by barricade of certain public right-of-way in the city of Roanoke located on sixteen Nineteenth Shenandoah Avenue Northwest between Sixteenth Street and Seventeenth Street, as more particularly described here and after, and dispense him with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval on a seven oh vote on this, uh, item. And at this time, I want to recognize Mr. Ferris for any comments or just to respond to any questions, and he will be on the phone line. Uh, thank you, Mr. Ferris. Can you hear us? Hello? Mr. Ferris, are you on the line? Well, uh, we'll go ahead and proceed. I'm going to open the public hearing. And, uh, are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter? Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up to speak?
No, no one on this matter.
Well, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments or questions, even though Ms. Ferris is not on the phone. All right, hearing done, Madam Clerk, I ask you to call roll, please.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb? Vice Mayor Cobb?
I hope that he can hear you.
So.
Vice Mayor.
Okay. And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes, thank you. Item number two is a request of Lee P. Huff, junior, to vacate, discontinue, and close an alley between Sylvan Road Southeast and Ivy Street Southeast and adjacent to properties at thirteen twenty Ivy Street Southeast, six oh one Camilla Street Southeast, and six fifteen Camilla Street Southeast. Lee P. Huff, junior, is the petitioner and spokesperson. There's an ordinance. Okay, I'm on motion.
June Osborne, move the ordinance.
First White Boyd, second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance permanently vacating, discontinuing, and closing a public right-of-way in the city of Roanoke located between Sylvan Road Southeast and Ivy Street Southeast and adjacent to properties located at thirteen twenty Ivy Street Southeast, six oh one Camilla Street Southeast, and six fifteen Camilla Street Southeast as more generally described here and after, and dispense him with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Uh, it must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval on a seven oh vote. At this time, I want to recognize Mr. Huff for any comments or to respond to any questions. Mr. Huff, are you on the phone?
Yes, Mr. Lee, uh, Mayor Lee, uh, good evening, City Council, I'm here to answer any questions that you have about it.
All right, uh, I'm going to open the public hearing. And are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter? Madam Clerk, are any citizens communicating with you to be heard?
No citizens on this matter.
And no citizen wishing to be heard, then I will close the public hearing and ask if any of the members of City Council have any comments or questions. And Mr. Huff, uh, is on the phone. All right, hearing done, then I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
The Best Fitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Item number three is a request of Mary D. Hilton, agent, Roanoke Emergency Medical Services Incorporated, to vacate, discontinue, and close an alley at the rear of property located at three seventy-four Day Avenue Southwest and oh Day Avenue Southwest and adjacent to three sixty-six Day Avenue Southwest. Mary D. Hilton is the petitioner and the spokesperson. Uh, there is an ordinance.
June Osborne, move the ordinance.
Michelle Davis, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance permanently vacating, discontinuing, and closing a public right-of-way in the city of Roanoke located at the rear of the property located at three seventy-four Day Avenue Southwest as more particularly described here and after, and dispense him with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval on a seven oh vote. And at this time, I want to recognize Ms. Hilton for any comments or to respond to any questions. And, uh, Ms. Hilton, are you on the phone?
I am, thank you, Mayor Lee.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna open the public hearing. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Do you have any names, uh, Madam Clerk?
No, we do not.
All right, we have no citizens wishing to be heard on this item, so therefore I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments or questions. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Muted.
Miss muted, Mr. Best Fitch?
Sorry, aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes, thank you. Item number four is a request of Valley View Mall S P E L L C to rezone property at forty-eight twenty-two Valley View Boulevard Northwest from C L S, Commercial Large Site District to M X P U D, Mixed Use Plan Unit Development, to allow for subdivision of the property. Ben Crew, Agent, Beza and Associates Incorporated is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance, can I get a motion, one second?
First White Boyd, move the ordinance.
June Osborne, second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance zoning certain property located at forty-eight twenty-two Valley View Boulevard Northwest from C L S Commercial Large Site District to M X P U D, Mixed Use Plan Unit Development District, and dispense him with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval on a seven oh vote on this item. Uh, I do want to recognize Mr. Crew for any comments or to respond to any questions. He would be on the phone, Mr. Crew, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am, Mayor Lee, be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. But I'm gonna open the public hearing and I will ask the clerk, are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this item?
There is no citizens on our time.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and I'll recognize my council colleagues for any questions or comments they may have. Ms. Moore?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Lee, uh, Mr. Crew, can you just tell me what the, uh, mixed use plan unit development would be? Do you have already in mind some plans already?
Um, no, ma'am, uh, there are no plans in place for future development. What this, what this is for, this is for, um, for Valley View Mall S P E L L C to be able to subdivide some of the out parcels. Um, there are no plans for future development right now, but this plan provides framework as the mall evolves over time for future development or redevelopment to happen.
Would you be the same person that we would talk to about, um, getting a bus shelter over on the outskirts of Valley View?
I'd be happy to put you in touch with the correct people and you can start with me, yes, ma'am.
Um, because we've made an attempt at that for, for many, many, many years. I think it goes back as far as Ms. Price, um, trying to get a bus shelter out there and they've denied it. So it would be nice to have a shelter for the, for those folks trying to catch Valley Metro out there at Valley View.
Absolutely, be happy to pass on those comments and if you want to provide any additional information, I'll be sure to get it to the right people.
Yeah, if, um, if you could reach out to the clerk and I can give you my information so they can contact me directly, I'd love to talk to someone about, uh, getting that started or, or trying to see if we can make that happen for those residents that live in that area and use that, uh, bus terminal.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes, thank you. Item number five is a request of Roanoke City Public Schools to amend the institutional plan unit development plan and conditions pervert as part of a previous rezoning at twenty-one oh two Grandin Road Southwest on August fifteenth, twenty sixteen by the adoption of an ordinance number four oh six fourteen dash oh eight eight one five one six. Amendments to the plan include the addition of a field house with particular landscaping and related access drive. Richard Rife, Agent, Interactive Design Group, is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, Phil Best Fitch.
June Osborne, second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number four oh six one four dash oh eight one five one six, adopted August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, to the extent that it has placed certain conditions on property located at twenty-one oh two Grandin Road Southwest bearing official tax map number one four six oh one oh one and amending the applicable plan and unit development plan pertaining to the aforementioned property and dispense it with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, it must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval on a six oh vote. And at this time, I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Rife for any comments or to respond to any questions or comments that you have. And, uh, Mr. Rife, are you on the phone?
Good evening, Mayor, this is Richard Rife, I'm here to, uh, respond to any questions you or members of council may have.
Well, thank you, I'm gonna now open the public hearing and, uh, are there any citizens wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Lee, Dan, uh, members of council, Dan Callahan, uh, there are no individuals who signed up to speak by telephone. However, we received two emails and one letter, um, and I will summarize those for you. You have copies of each of the communications, um, that were delivered to you over the weekend. Uh, Kathy, Kathy Gross sent an email on June five, uh, two thousand two at four ten P M, recommends that, uh, Roanoke Public Schools spend money on academics rather than athletics, especially with regard to the, the impacts of COVID nineteen on city schools. Judith Harris, Harrison sent an email at June five at eleven forty-one A M, says she's very concerned about spending on a field house with the economic, economic challenges facing the city. And, uh, Kathleen, Catherine Gross also sent a letter dated, uh, June four in which she emphasized her concerns about spending on athletics rather than academics.
Thank you. Uh, let me just say that, uh, for years, I have been a part of it, uh, supporting the, uh, group to create a field house at Patrick Henry. For those of you that may not be aware, now with that, and it's a beautiful field over there, the football team, and it's gonna be used for more than football, but the football team has to walk up the steps and walk practically back to the school during half times of a game to play. And for years, that has been the, the booster club have been raising funds and it's something that the school administration wanted to do. You may note that William Fleming has a, a quite large field house on their field. So this will give our, uh, student athletes and others a chance to be, to be even more competitive and I think it, it makes a difference. And this is something that's been in the works for a number of years. And, uh, I feel that is, is worthy of, of our support, given, given what it means to those student athletes.
Mayor, I just want to remind you, you're still in the public hearing, so, um, council comment should, uh, any further comment should follow after you close the public hearing.
Oh, okay, all right. Uh, if there are no questions, we will, no comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if there are any comments that they would like to make regarding this field house at Patrick Henry High School. Uh, Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Lee, um, I did want to respond, um, uh, Ms. Harrison's email that we received made mention, and a couple of them made mention of spending, um, specific to the field house. And I did just want to point out that we are not in any way budgeting or allocating any kind of money. We are simply giving permission that should the school system move forward with this, um, that that is their decision completely outside of our purview. We are just, um, uh, here to discuss the actual rezoning of the property itself, um, so, but did read the emails that we received and appreciated all that feedback, uh, and the comments that we received, thank you.
Great point, Ms. Davis, thank you for bringing that up, uh, that it is, Mr. Best Fitch?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I wanted to piggyback on that a little bit and, and, uh, refer to some comments I made in a, uh, another context earlier today on this kind of issue because I think people often do not realize that we set sons of, funds aside every year for the school board to use for capital purposes only. And if we start pulling money out of that capital fund and using it for operational expenses, it can, uh, be a detriment to our credit rating, which means when we issue bonds, the interest rate would go up and it would cost possibly millions more dollars, uh, for our capital improvement program over the long term. So, I, I, I know that's a hard concept for a lot of people to understand, but you really have to keep the capital funds and the operating funds separate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Best Fitch, that's another good point. All right, any more comments by members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance. Thank you, Ms. Rife.
Thank you.
All right. All right. All right, item number six. Is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to amend the city code to implement changes mandated by the General Assembly with regard to the regulation of electric power assisted bicycles within the city. Robert S. Cowles, Jr., city manager, is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Do you want to move the ordinance?
Second. Phil Best Pitch, second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amended and reordaining section 20-131. Definitions, age of operation, division one generally, article seven, mopeds, bicycles, and electric powered assisted bicycles of chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic of the code of the City of Roanoke as amended. Amending and reordaining articles seven, mopeds, bicycles, and electric powered assisted bicycles of chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic by adding a new division five, electric power assisted bicycles, electric personal assistive mobility devices, electric personal delivery devices, electrically powered toy vehicles, and motorized skateboards or scooter. Articles seven, mopeds, bicycles, and electronic powered assisted bicycles of chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic of the code of the City of Roanoke as amended. And amending and reordaining section 24-94, motor vehicle and bicycles to be operated or ridden only on designated roadways or areas. Article four, parks, chapter 24, public buildings and property, property generally of the code of the City of Roanoke as amended in order to implement changes mandated by the General Assembly and to ban all classes of electric assisted bicycles from shared use paths and naturally, and natural surface trails within the city and Carvin's Cove Natural Reserve, providing for an effective dates and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Well, thank you. At this time, I'm going to recognize the city manager, Mr. Cowle, for any remarks that he'd like to make.
Nothing, nothing to add other than to remind council that you have been provided, I think, a variety of different options that might exist after you conclude the public, whatever question as well, but nothing else to add. Thank you.
All right. I will this time open the public hearing. For citizens wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk, how many do we have that have signed up to address this issue?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dan Callahan, the clerk advises that we have 29 individuals who would like to speak with you this evening. In addition, we have 64 emails, 44 of which you have received and the balance you will receive later this evening. And I will summarize as, as quickly as I can. I also point out that you also each received a package of information from a gentleman named Dick Howard. The emails, the package was delivered to you. So, Mr. Mayor, first thing I guess is open the public hearing.
I thought I, I did. The public hearing has been opened.
Oh, you did open, okay. Then with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I will go through the emails as expeditiously as I can.
Okay.
Ellen Harmon, June 10th, 9:00 AM opposes electric bikes on the greenways. Say it'd be a huge detriment to the greenways. Ellen Harmon sent a second email, same, obviously same position. Harry L. Smith, email wasn't time stamped, but is adamantly against allowing any electric device other than those used by the handicapped to access greenway. Harry Smith is a Roanoke Greenway Ambassador. John Westervelt, Jr., June 4th at 8:31 AM supports e-bikes especially for use by senior citizens and special needs population. Eric Olson, June 2 at 4:24 PM, allow all classes of e-bikes on greenways and natural, natural surface paths. Rachel Ruhlen, June 2nd at 4:40 PM, please read my comments to council. The civic, her specific quote is, "The League of American Bicycleists recommend no restrictions on class one e-bikes. Restrictions on class two and class three e-bikes are less problematic and the league is less concerned when those restrictions are for natural surfaces, surface trails," end of quote. Jennifer Divers, June 5 at 10:01 PM, Ms. Divers support the use of e-bikes on shared paths. She opposes any use of any class of bikes on natural trails. Ms. The Jay Goudlin, J U L D I N, June 8 at 2:05 PM, expressed an interest in participating at the public hearing. I don't know if he signed up. We'll find out. Kyle Inman, June 8 at 12:59 PM, supports the use of all classes of e-bikes on shared paths and natural surface trails. He, specific quote he wanted read to was, "In summary, there are more reasons to decline to adopt city ordinance or policy that continues pedal assisted bicycle prohibition overriding Virginia legislation. Down the road, if this somehow turns out to have been a bad legislation, then enact the necessary ordinances to correct the situation." Rachel Ruhlen, R U H L E N, June 8 at 7:44 PM, provide additional comments in support of class one e-bikes on shared paths and paved paths. She also encouraged you to expand the greenway between Wasina Park and Piedmont Park. A woman named Diane, June 7 at 9:32 PM, opposed e-bikes on greenway. Stuart and Sharon Hubbell, June 11 at 11:30 AM, oppose e-bikes on greenway. Dan Ulmer, June 11, 11:21 AM, supports all classes of e-bikes on all trails and paths. Gordon Ewald, June 11, at 10:50 AM, opposes ollie bikes on greenways and natural surface trails. He is a founding member of the Roanoke Greenway Ambassador Program. Martin Trussell, June 11 at 10:06 AM, opposes all classes of e-bikes on greenway. James Breckel, B R E A K E L L, June 11 at 9:09 AM, opposed to all classes of e-bikes on greenways and natural surfaces. Jenna McFarland, June 11 at 8:41 AM, opposed to all classes of e-bikes in greenways, on greenways and natural surface trails. Edward Lawton Schlagel, June 11 at 7:21 AM, opposed to all classes of e-bikes on, and on greenways and natural surface trails. Brian Battiger, June 11 at 7:08 AM, opposed to all classes of e-bikes on greenways and most natural surface trails. Mr. Battiger suggested allowing e-bikes on more rural trails. Rand Garrett, June 11 at 11:56 AM, supports all classes of e-bikes on shared paths and greenways. Ron Reese, June 11, 10:51 AM, opposed to all classes of e-bikes on most greenways and natural surface trails. May support e-bikes on more, most infrequently used paved greenways. Nicole Ashby, June 11 at 11:12 AM, shared a copy of the email from Dan Ulmer, who Mr. Ulmer supports all classes of, of e-bikes on all surfaces. Joshua Dietz, June 11 at 1:56 was a transmission of a letter that he provided. He is head of, he's the chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. He advises councils that the board supports all classes of e-bikes on all shared paths and natural surfaces. Martin Trussell, June 11 at 1:42 PM supplemented his email with the following, and in light of the length of this, I think this is important to read. Quote, "My wife, a walker, would hold that anyone with a road bike and wearing a bike jersey, me, should be banned from riding the greenway, at least in groups of three or more." Ken and Debbie, I'm not sure who, what their last name is, June 11 at 8:13 AM, P M, rather, allow all classes of e-bikes on all shared paths and natural surfaces. Suggested a permit system with fees to cover the administrative costs. Ryan Battinger wrote again on June 11 at 8:07 PM and forwarded his email that he sent earlier. Carol Pruner, June 11 at 4:52 PM, she's a bike rider and opposed to all classes of bikes. Is very concerned about safety, especially from Black Dog to the water treatment plant on the greenway. Stephen Ambrose sent a letter, Mr. Ambrose from Downshift Bikes supports all classes of e-bikes on all shared paths and natural surface trails. Jan Van, John Van Luick, L U I K, June 11 at 3:53 PM, supports class one use on greenways only for senior citizens or handicapped individuals, opposes all other classes. Nancy and Charles Ailing, June 12 at 7:29 AM, opposed to all classes of e-bikes on greenways and natural surface trails. Rosalie Flowers, June 12 at 10:38 AM, supports all classes of e-bikes and all, on all shared paths and natural surface trails. Dan Ulmer, June 11 at 10:08 AM, P M, rather, Mr. Ulmer forwarded an email that he had sent to Mr. Best Pitch at item 13 that I just read. Tom Carr, June 12 at 12:09 PM, supports all classes of e-bikes on all shared paths and natural surface trails. Arthur LaRoche, June 12 at 1:03 PM, supports only class one bikes on shared paths, opposes all other uses. Rupert Cutler, June 2nd at 2:48 PM, opposes all classes of e-bikes on all shared paths and natural surface trails. Mr. Cutler observed, "Motorized bikes belong on the street system, not on our natural trails. The final frontier of tranquility in an otherwise noise-filled world." Diane Christopoulos, June 2nd at 3:21 PM, supports class one and class two share, on shared paths only. Opposes all classes on natural surface trails. Catherine Fox, June 12 at, was a letter, supports e-bikes with some restrictions on speed. James Harshfield, June 12 at 6:43 PM, opposes allowing any class of e-bike on shared paths or natural surface trails. Sheila Barnhart, June 13 at 8:41 PM, Ms. Barnhart is 75 years old and supports the use of e-bikes on greenways. Deborah Caldwell Bono, June 14 at 12:52 PM, opposes all e-bikes on trails. Ms. Bono rides horses and is concerned about the safety of e-bike riders, horse riders, and pedestrians on these trails. Blatch Brower, B R O W E R, June 14 at 2:57 PM, supports e-bikes on greenway, opposes e-bikes on trails at Carvin's Cove. Bree Vassar, June 14 at 6:47 PM, supports e-bikes, provides an article describing the benefits of e-bikes. Kenneth MacLeod, June 15 at 11:08 PM, strongly supports e-bikes being allowed on paved greenways and also supports at least class one and class two on natural surfaces. Marty McCarthy, Larry Landau, June 15. Consider letting e-bikes on greenways propose a speed limit that would be easier to enforce. Both own class two e-bikes. As I noted, Mr. Howard provided you with the package, opposes all classes of e-bikes on shared paths and, and natural surface trails. This package was delivered to the clerk's office on June 11. On June 15, 1:34 PM, an email from Jeremy Holmes. He is a supporter of e-bikes and urges of dropping the ban. This is from Becky Gay, June 15 at 1:34 PM. Her family uses the bike, uses the greenway to ride bikes. It is not in the best interest of safety to allow motorized bikes on the greenway. Bonnie T. Lee, June 15 at 3:48 PM. Opening the greenways to motorized bikes will enable a greater variety of people to use a facility, but we should insist on rules of courtesy by all users. This is Anna Anderson, who sent an email to just Mr. Best Pitch, but was forwarded to the clerk's office. Please do not allow any bikes on greenways or mixed use trails. This is an email from Gail Jackson at June 14 at 5:23 PM. Horse owner and biker, please do not allow e-bikes to destroy our trails we've worked so hard to, to build. This is from, I think this is from Dee Probono, I'm not sure who that is. Oh, it's, is Ms. Caldwell Bono, excuse me. She had, this is an email that was sent to her, sent to saying, and this was a continuation of her early email where she's opposed as a horse rider from greenways. Betty Haunt, H O N S E, sent an email on June 13 at 8:06 PM. A horse rider and a hiker in Carvin's Cove, totally against e-bikes on roads and trails there. This is from, that's the email address, I don't, person didn't sign it. Oh, yes, excuse me, did. Leslie and Henry Smith from Truckville sent an email on June 13 at 8:07 PM. Please do not allow e-bikes on the beautiful trails at Carvin's Cove. Again, horse riders. This is from Ron Smith, senior citizen that rides horses on Carvin's Cove. I'm opposed to e-bikes being allowed to share the same trails as we ride. This email was sent on June 13 at 7:13 PM. This is an email from Rand Garrett, he had sent you an earlier email. This was sent on June 13 at 3:19 PM. And seems, he seems to, he has, he uses his electric bike on the greenway and, and would, would support that. This is from John Picktron, who lives now in Raleigh, North Carolina, sent an email on June 13 at 11:33 AM. I am, we're, I would suggest that e-bikes make sense on hard surface greenways and bike lanes as a clean and efficient alternative to commuter transportation, but the potential destruction on a single track is significant. This is from Matt Bennett. He asked, this email was sent on June 13 at 9:37 AM. Please change the rule and allow e-bikes on trails. This would allow people like myself to keep up and enjoy the trails like everyone else. This is an email from Jill Blanchard. Keep the trails as loved as they are and do not allow e-bikes or any type of motorized vehicles on the trails with specific reference to Carvin's Cove. This is an email, email from Gerald Sea Phoney, was sent on June 13 at 7:16 AM. He's, I am opposed to allowing motorized vehicles, including e-bikes, on trails and greenways. This is from James Harshfield. He's very concerned about the trails for bikers, hikers, and horse riders. The simple weight of the bikes would damage the trails, but for the paved greenways, though, the trail damage would not be a problem for e-bikes at higher speed, which is Chris, decrease enjoyment of our valuable resource. So I take that as opposed to. This is from Ashley Seward, who's with regulate, she's a regular, with regulatory and policy analyst, People for Bikes Coalition, June 12 at 4:43 PM. They're in favor of allowing class one, two, and three "They're in favor of allowing Class 1, 2 and 3 e-bikes on your city's greenways and trails." And support the recommendation of the project. This is an email from Kathy and Jim Overholser, O-V-E-R-H-O-L-S-E-R. We don't, they don't think it's a good idea to allow e-bikes on greenways. This is from Mr. LaRoche, again, and this is a reply from Councilmember Best pitch to Mr. LaRoche. Mr. LaRoche was supportive only of e-bikes on greenways. That email, Mr. Best pitch's email was sent on June 15, 11:45 a.m. This is an email from Mr. Best pitch to Tom Carr. You may, Mr. Carr submitted one supporting all classes on all surfaces. Just for everyone, the public information, Mr. Carr was the former director of the planning department in the city. And finally, because we haven't checked any emails since I've been up here. This is June 15, at 11:50 a.m. Carol Whiteside, "Do not allow motorized vehicles on our greenways and trails. It would be irresponsible." Mayor, now it's time for the public speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. At this time, I will recognize Madam Clerk, those citizens wishing to be heard.
Yes, Mayor, we have 29 speakers to be heard, and I, our first speaker-
And they have given three minutes each?
Three minutes each, yes. The first speaker is Wesley Best.
Thank you, City Council, I appreciate you holding this meeting. I wanted to mainly speak to e-bikes on the greenways, and I wanted to talk about our need to have more bicycle commuting in the area. Roanoke plays itself up as a, as a sort of a bicycle hotbed, and we are. But one thing that we're really lacking is people using bikes as transportation in this area. People for Bikes just put out their rankings of cities in the United States. We ranked, okay, but we ranked very poorly in people using their bikes for transportation, and that's a very important issue, not only for biking and for economic development and for all of those sorts of things, but for the environment, for people being healthier, more active. And the idea of not allowing e-bikes in that equation is, to me, problematic. And especially considering that our greenway system links a lot of our neighborhoods together to places where a lot of our people work, Carrillion, Roanoke Memorial Hospital and Community Hospital in the downtown area. All of those areas are linked by greenways, and the idea that people can't use electrically-assisted bicycles to help them get there, I think is a mistake. And Roanoke is not an easy city to get around in on a bike unless you're an avid bicyclist. And electric bikes equalize that for a lot of people. And I just think that we need to allow them the ability to use those greenways as a transportation corridor to get to where they need to go. That's all I have to say, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Phil Hobrila.
Sorry, my last name is kind of a doozy, can y'all hear me all right? Okay, okay, perfect. So I want to speak as to a couple of things. So I've lived in Roanoke for about four years now, and I'm one of the few people in the valley who, well, I live in Salem now, and I'm one of the few people in the valley who actually commutes from Salem to Roanoke by bike on a weekly basis. And, you know, it's dangerous. I think they don't get clipped, but I regularly have people curse at me, you know, get in my space when I'm on Melrose and on Shenandoah. And there are alternatives to those routes that involve greenways, and I'm legally not allowed to use them. It's frankly, it's problematic that cars are allowed to use, you know, United States routes, US highways, multiple classes of routes, and bikes are allowed to use streets and nothing else. It's, you know, I'm using the word problematic a lot because it's problematic. You know, I'm a gay person, and today I gained some momentous civil rights, but right now I feel like other civil rights of mine are continuing to be taken away. As a person with a disability, I rely on my electric bike. I can't get to work without it. I have a driver's license, but I, I can't drive without someone else in the car with me, and this e-bike is my lifeline. There are times when drivers are acting aggressively, where I really need to get on the greenway for my safety, or when there are, you know, road blockages on the city streets, where simply I would have to get an Uber or get someone to pick me up with my bike, you know, without taking the greenways. I want to speak also to the health factors involved in using an electric bike. Electric bikes have been shown to provide enormous benefits to a variety of people, people with cerebral palsy, people with arthritis, low back pain, people who are preparing for and following up on bariatric surgery, because it's a low-impact exercise, but it's also an all-body workout. People with disabilities such as myself with autism or intellectually disabled, and can't really drive a car, people who are even blind to some degree, if they're not totally blind, can ride an electric bike in a way that they cannot ride a car. Additionally, I want to speak to horses. Aside from horse ownership being a modern whore, and animal being held in slavery, usually by a privileged white person, horses are very high-impact animals on our trails. They literally have steel on their feet, and they, you know, plop and clap into the ground, and they are the ones that are destroying trails, not bikes. A bike, an e-bike, has maybe 20 extra pounds on it due to the battery. It has generally the same frame as any other type of bike, and then it has a human. Horses, I think, weigh around 1,000 pounds. They are unpredictable animals that are potentially violent. And frankly, when I see horses at Carvin's Cove, I'm afraid of them. I'm not afraid of bikes because they're controlled by a person, but a horse cannot be controlled. It's a wild animal, essentially.
Your three-minute limit is over, so. Our next speaker is Ann Kohinki. No response from her. The next speaker is Matthew McKimmy.
Good evening, council members and neighbors, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm encouraging you to set a good example of governance by basing your leadership regarding e-bikes on fact and not on fear, and to therefore allow Class 1 through 3 e-bikes on all city-managed paths and trails, presented to you as Alternative 1 to proposed legislation. When we choose to prioritize loudly-shouted fears over scientifically-researched facts, the end result is often prejudice and exclusion, and we already have plenty of that in our world. You're going to hear tonight from other Roanokers who are afraid of what allowing e-bikes may mean in terms of public safety, speed, trail maintenance and overcrowding. However, these fears are not supported by the facts that we find in numerous studies on the real-world use and impact of e-bike. Fears say that since e-bikes are capable of traveling at higher speeds, this will lead to an increase in unsafe speed-related interactions. But studies on the safety of e-bikes have found that just like conventional bicyclists, most e-bike riders do not sustain speeds near their maximum. The facts show e-bike riders average only a couple of miles an hour faster than unassisted bicyclists, mostly due to the fact that they can climb hills more easily. The same study also found that no increase in public safety incidence among e-bike riders has compared to conventional bikes. In fact, allowing e-bikes on the greenway would actually increase public safety, as we've heard tonight, by not forcing vulnerable e-bike riders to share city streets with car traffic, which is currently their only legal option. If the safety of all greenway users is a primary concern of the council, the solution is not an e-bike ban based on fear and intended to be enforced by the police. The answer is a well-designed public safety campaign to educate our community on how best to share the path, which is a proven, effective way to address behaviors like speeding, extendable dog leashes, yielding in passing etiquette and so on. Fear says that e-bikes will lead to more wear and tear on our trails at Mill Mountain and Carvin's Cove, but facts show that the trail impacts from e-mountain bikes and traditional mountain bikes are not significantly different. We must listen to the facts and not fears. Any increase in impact is more likely to be caused by an increase in the number of people using these trails and not from the types of bikes they're riding. Fear says allowing e-bikes on greenways and trails will increase the use of these amazing assets in our community, causing density issues and overcrowding. But isn't that our goal? To encourage more people to get outside, to be healthy and enjoy all the quality of life Roanoke has to offer? Since we've already heard the facts that e-bikes won't create speed or safety issues, this fear about increased density is basically just saying, "We don't want more people using our greenways and trails, we want to keep them for ourselves." If the concern we need to address is overcrowding, the solution is not letting fear determine who can use these resources, but to continue to improve and expand them. Please don't give into fear, act on the facts and choose Alternative 1, thank you.
Our next speaker is Cole Inman.
Everybody hear me? So I'd like to start out with just a show of hands on the video. How many of you have ridden an e-bike? Cool, if you haven't, contact me, I have one, I'll be glad to let you ride it. So I help direct the Creature from Carvin's Cove Mountain Bike Race. I'm also the Communications Chair of the Blue Ridge Off-Road Cyclists. We are the chapter of the International Mountain Bicycling Association. We volunteer and do trail work in Roanoke City, and our stance on this is we're in favor of allowing all e-bikes on all trails and greenways. This is the same, this is the same as the IMBA stance in that if it doesn't impact regular bike access, then we're in favor of it. Trail impact is something a lot of people think about. So as far as mountain bikes go, or electric mountain bikes, they're all Class 1. The Class 2 and Class 3 are more on the road, commuting. They have no throttle, they are pedal-assisted only up to 20 miles an hour. They use the same tires and components as regular bikes, and the assistance scales with the strength you're able to contribute to it. So you're not going 20 miles an hour all the time. This bike right here, that is my e-bike, it is only 16 pounds heavier than my traditional bike. And as others have said, that pales in comparison to a horse or even to other riders that are, you know, weigh more than me using a traditional bike. So as Matthew mentioned, IMBA has studied this, and they found that, quote, "Soil displacement and tread disturbance in Class 1 EMTBs and traditional mountain bikes were not significantly different," end quote. We're in a good position here because other places with many more trail users have allowed them. I have contacted Massanutten and the Shenandoah Valley Bicycle Coalition. They actually rent e-bikes for use on the western slope trails, and they haven't seen any additional impact issues. And there's other places like Fairfax, Denver and Park City that have way more users than us that have been allowing e-bikes for a while now. Speed's another thing people talk about. The Boulder County Study and also the University of Tennessee Study came up with similar results measuring average speeds. Actually found e-bikes to travel at 1 mile per hour slower than traditional bikes. So me and my dad, we run the Creature from Carvin's Cove race, and if e-bikes are allowed, we will have medical staff on an e-bike, which will vastly increase safety, and will also be able to help our trail work efforts in preparing for the event. So I'm lucky to have a father who's been mountain biking in Roanoke for 30 years, just like I am now, he was advocating for bikes on Carvin's Cove years ago. And COVID-19 has really put into perspective how little time we have on this earth, and there's no way around it, riding e-bikes with my dad allows me to enjoy more trails, go farther.
Your three-minute limit is over.
Thank you, stay well.
Our next speaker, Liz Belcher.
I'm the Roanoke Valley Greenway Coordinator, and I've worked with the locality since 1966 to get greenways and trails established. I support the ordinance before you, which would continue the ban of e-bikes from greenways and natural surface trails. Under the new law, you can do that after this hearing for public safety, which you've heard about, and for compliance with other laws, which you already have in the existing ordinance. I propose continuation of the ban for additional reasons beyond safety and compliance. Give staff time to assess the changes needed to safely allow Class 1 e-bikes. I do not support Class 2 or 3. These changes might include striping, clearing of sightlines or curb warnings. It's easy to keep the ban now and change the rule later, rather than to change now and then try to go backwards. Give yourself time to consider the cost and the legal impacts. If you allow e-bikes, you will need to change city design standards for future greenways that have wider widths and curves. Give yourself and the public more time to consider the impact and experiences of others. Over half the states do not allow e-bikes on greenways and trails. Some safety issues you should consider. Greenways were not designed for electric vehicles, but for pedestrians and bicycles moving up to 15 miles an hour. E-bike users may not be as fit and may have poorer reaction times. It's easy to go too fast on an e-bike, so you need to set an expectation, like a speed limit. Users will help us course it as drivers do on the road. Other users will have to adjust, like keeping dogs on shorter leashes, so we might need pull-off spots and arrows at intersections. And of course, you know about crowding, and we all have to think about that. On natural surface trails, I have coordinated crews building trails on Mill Mountain and Carvin's Cove for over 20 years. Our volunteers have provided 41,700 hours of trail building on city land, equivalent to 20 full-time positions or $986,000 worth of time. Volunteers prefer to build trail, it is inherently more satisfying than repairing damage. An e-bike is a machine that can easily cause erosion and damage hand-built features. Hikers, any questions, already feel that bicycles often go too fast. In summary, I do not support e-bikes of any class on natural surface trails. I encourage you to pass the proposed ordinance and then take several months to analyze all the issues in relation to e-bikes on paved greenways.
Our next speaker is Frank Sims.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Lee and members of the Roanoke City Council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak at this public hearing, addressing the use of electric power-assisted bicycles on the Roanoke Valley greenways within the city of Roanoke, and along with the natural surface trails at Carvin's Cove Reserve and Mill Mountain. My name is Frank Sims, I am the Chairman of the Roanoke Valley Greenway Commission, and I'm a volunteer with Pathfinder's Midweek Crew, who does the maintenance on these trails. My comments here are not intended to represent the entirety of comment by members of the commission, but to provide some insight as to steps the commission has taken regarding electric power-assisted bicycles or e-bikes. The Roanoke greenways and trails provide a family-friendly, healthy and safe environment for individuals to enjoy the outdoors. Those utilizing the greenways and trails do so by walking, hiking and bicycling the many miles, excuse me, afforded for their use, whether for recreation or connectivity to other areas within the Roanoke Valley. The greenways provide the most extensive outdoor facility in the valley for those with mobility impairments or children in strollers. By these activities, the greenways and trails provide a health benefit to the users. This, I believe- This, I believe, was and still is one of the primary goals of the greenways and trails. In 2018, the Greenway Commission, to whom the city of Roanoke has three citizens and two staff appointed as representatives, began to look closely at the introduction of e-bikes on the Roanoke Valley Greenways by forming a committee to explore this issue in depth. That included looking at the rules and regulations regarding e-bikes across the state and laws regarding bicycles within the five jurisdictions on the Commission, as well as other locations in Virginia and various states. All members of the committee, which represented all five local jurisdictions, rode an e-bike so as to gain an understanding as to how they handle and the speeds that they can obtain. The conclusion of the committee after completing its investigation was that the existing no-motorized vehicle rules previously implemented by each of the five-member localities for the greenways and trails should remain in force. The conclusion of the committee was based upon safety considerations, including design limitations for the greenways and trails, and the makeup of individuals recreating on them. The opinion of the committee and Commission has not changed over time as more information regarding e-bikes has become available. Regarding the electric power assisted bicycles, Roanoke City Council should be aware that although three classes of a power of e-bikes are defined, 22 of the three as defined are essentially electric power assisted bicycles. The Class 2 electric power assisted bicycle is basically a motorbike as it provides power to the bicycle without the need for pedaling, with speed controlled by throttle. Also, the class, like, e-bike can go 28 miles an hour.
Excuse me, your three-minute limit is over. Our next speaker is Whit Elderman.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you all so much for allowing public comment on this at a time when there are so many other things that seem to have so much more weight than this issue. But again, this is before us all and I do appreciate the time that you all have put in. So I'll be brief. You've heard eloquent comments on both sides and you're going to hear many more. And you've had lots of public comment from many of us in the bike community. E-bikes are not about speed, they're about mobility. They're not motorcycles, they're not mopeds. I happen to be the owner of Cardinal Bicycle and people who come to Cardinal looking for e-bikes aren't looking for a way to go faster on greenways or trails. They're looking for ways to be able to ride when, before, they weren't able to. They're looking for increased mobility, not increased speed. We've had the opportunity to put older riders on e-bikes who didn't think they would be able to ride again. We've had the opportunity to give patients of orthopedic surgery an opportunity to ride when they thought their physical limitations would keep them off a bike forever. We have one customer who has been able to start riding again now after extensive cancer treatment, only because of an e-bike. Roanoke is an All-American Hall of Fame, All-American City Hall of Fame winner. It's an Inba Silver Ride Center. It's a bronze level bike-friendly city. E-bikes are the single fastest segment of the bicycle industry nationally and internationally. Roanoke is already a leader in so many areas and we have a chance to lead here. Our region is watching what the city does and they're going to follow suit. Many objections have and will be raised about e-bikes, most of which are based frankly on misunderstandings of e-bikes. Many of you have had an opportunity to ride an e-bike and I think you'll know and you can agree that the comparisons with motorcycles just don't hold up. As to speed, we can set aside all the specifics of classes or anything like that and know that the speed limit on the greenway will remain and speed on an e-bike is a choice, just like it is on a conventional bike. Again, I want to keep my comments brief because there will be many more. I thank you all for your time. I ask you all to consider this thoughtfully as you already have and do allow e-bikes on our paved surfaces and trails because again, this opens up mobility for so many more of our citizens and allows Roanoke to continue to be the leader that it's been in our region. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dean Ambrose.
Hello. Thank you, members of council and Mr. Mayor, for the time to speak today. Last month, my family purchased a Class 1 Bokke. This is a Dutch-style cargo bike that allows us to carry our three-month-old baby safety on bicycle trips. He absolutely loves riding in front of this bike. When I see his smile, I'm reminded of just how much I love getting to share the outdoors with him and how trips on the greenway are safe, free of traffic, and such a beautiful place to ride a bicycle. My mother, who's in her 60s, has an e-bike that allows her to ride with her friends again. Her bad knee prevents her from riding a traditional bicycle, but the e-bike allows her to spend an entire day outdoors, getting exercise and fresh air. My father, who's responsible for introducing me to cycling, has an e-cargo bike so that he can make trips to the grocery store without the need for a car. He owns two traditional bicycles as well as the e-cargo bike and continues to use all three. For him, the e-bike is a tool that helps replace his car. There are countless other examples of e-bike owners in the Roanoke Valley who use their e-bikes for recreation and alternative transportation. In the short time I have owned Downshift, we have touched the lives of so many people that are now able to get outside and rediscover their love of cycling. People have said to me how grateful they are that they can return to riding on a bicycle or that their e-bike allows them to ride with their partners again. These are everyday folks, the kind of people that want to get healthy and live an active life, not the scary boogeyman that others in this hearing are trying to make you believe will be out riding on our trails and greenways. In this hearing, I'm certain that arguments have been brought up concerning speed, safety or trail damage. These arguments are all related to user behavior and not the types of equipment being used. Roadways regulate and enforce user behavior, for example, speeding, reckless driving and driving under the influence. There are no laws, to my knowledge, limiting how many horsepower my car can have. User behavior is what causes these issues, not the equipment. If anything, these arguments brought up by e-bike opponents beg for the construction of more greenways to avoid overcrowding. Our leadership at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board voted unanimously to recommend allowing all three classes of e-bikes on all trails and greenways. These are the folks who are charged with managing and maintaining our resources. They have done the research into the technology and the user behavior associated with e-bike usage around the country. The e-bike conundrum is not unique to Roanoke and they have recognized that Roanoke will see great benefits to the region by allowing e-bikes on our trails and greenways. Roanoke has prided itself on being a welcoming city that values the outdoors. And it's time to step up and be a cycling leader. Let's allow e-bikes on all our trails and greenways and be a true advocate for cycling. I think the star宿of cycling has a kind of a good ring to it. And let's continue down that path towards a more welcoming and cycling-friendly community. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is David Sterling Hunt.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. My name is David Hunt. I'm a 69-year-old retired physician. I have been cycle commuting. I cycle commuted for the last 15 years of my career, ending with my retirement this year. I've used the greenway a large part of that time and I would like to, in the interest of time, just concentrate on one aspect of the argument. I feel that the argument in favor of e-bikes as a commuting asset on the greenway is a false one because the greenways are typically very flat and easy to ride. The e-bikes would be more useful on the hilly roads and places where commuter, cycle commuters, need to keep up with traffic. As I say, I've been cycling with a human-powered bike on the greenway for 15 years and have found it to be a very comfortable and easy way to get back and forth, all times of year and all times of the day and night. The other aspect of the cycling controversy that I'm interested in is the notion of trail maintenance. I think there's no question that increased usage and faster speeds on the trails will cause more damage. I've also volunteered working on the trails and I prefer to see them maintained for non-powered use. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Richard Howard. Seems to be no response from Mr. Howard. We'll go to our next speaker, Kelsey Harrington.
City Council members, thank you for providing the space today. My family passionately chooses to utilize a bicycle as a form of transportation as much as possible over a vehicle. So much money, policy and marketing has gone into making our city bike-friendly and, quote, "the east coast mountain bike capital." But there are two main reasons that make it possible for us to navigate Roanoke by bike, the greenway and our e-bikes. We choose to move through the city on our e-bikes for a few reasons. We live in a mountainous city. You cannot navigate a single neighborhood by bicycle without approaching a large hill. An e-bike makes these hills easier to handle by providing a bit of assistance. We use our e-bike to get groceries, do daycare pickup and more. At times, my bicycle and the cargo weighs more than 100 pounds. Trust me. Zooming around pedestrians at lighting speeds in my Chacos with a toddler in tow on my e-bike is not the goal. I literally would not be able to replace these car trips with a bicycle without e-assist. The second reason I stated we are able to use a bicycle instead of a car is because of the greenway system. There are parts of our city that unfortunately are inaccessible by bike without the greenways. Between my home in Raleigh Court and our daycare in South Roanoke, the greenway is the safest and quickest way to get between these two spaces. My alternatives would be to take my 16-month-old to daycare via Brandon Avenue or through Old Southwest, over the Franklin Bridge, that has an off-and-on ramp from 581. These alternatives are not ideal, to say the least. The same goes for parts of northeast Roanoke where we do much of our grocery shopping. The Lick Run Greenway allows us to comfortably traverse by bicycle as a family. Allowing e-bikes on the greenway would increase my family's safety. These two things, our e-bikes and the greenway, together, need to be together in order for us to replace our car trips with bike trips. The more bike trips we can take, the healthier we are as a family and the more we are able to contribute a multitude of positive outcomes to our community. My final plea is for you to consider those who are unable to bike without e-assist. My partner has type 1 diabetes, a chronic incurable autoimmune disease that creates a scenario where he is literally teetering on the edge of blood sugar levels that are too high or too low. My partner never felt comfortable biking as a family due to the risks of low blood sugars that occur with physical exertion. An e-bike has changed that. We now enjoy bike trips as a family. I'm proud to say my partner was able to complete a 50-mile ride, something that was not a reality without an e-bike. Please take into consideration the families who use bikes as transportation and those who have physical limitations and disabilities when making your decision today.
The next speaker is Rob Eisen.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak for a moment today. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. So a lot of this is just going to piggyback on some stuff that's already been said, but I wanted, there's been some discussion about some, like what you fear might happen. And a couple of things are, one, the trail damage. And I could just say that, you know, Cole was exactly correct in the things that he said about the science behind this. So the science doesn't support that the trails are going to be impacted any differently than they would be by a human-powered bicycle, a completely human-powered bicycle, because it's not, it's electric assist. It just helps you, I mean, it simply helps you with the climbs and that's it. I want to give a few anecdotal items about inclusivity. So for example, if you have three or four friends and you're interested in this, like our city is a progressive inclusivity-supporting city and somebody wants to try mountain biking or one of your friends has a busier life and maybe they had bike in the past. I've personally seen on the trails here in Roanoke, a friend who isn't maybe as fit, but having a wonderful time when he did have the time to squeeze in a mountain bike ride with his friends, thanks to an e-mountain bike. And there was nothing, like nobody, none of the equestrians knew that he was on an e-bike. There's just no difference whatsoever, other than he had, he was able to make it up the climbs with his friends. Another thing is age inclusivity. So we have a wonderful population of riders in our community and as we age, we lose strength and endurance, but like, actually Cole mentioned earlier as well, he gets to ride with his dad. Like, I'm 50 years old, I've got a seven-year-old kid, there's not going to be like an infinite number of years where I'm going to be able to enjoy mountain biking in a mountainous community like Roanoke with my seven-year-old son, who one day will be 37. So it kind of extends and it makes, it opens up the outdoors to a greater age group. And then thirdly, I just want to say that my son, I have three boys, one who has cancer and he is in the process of defeating cancer. He used to be able to ride a bike normally, but it's difficult for him now. I don't own an e-bike now, but I have friends that sometimes let us borrow theirs. And when my son is able to use an e-assist bike, he can do it and he enjoys it. And my hope is that he continues his battle to defeat cancer, that we will be able to legally mountain bike together here in Roanoke, in our hometown. And then I just want to close by saying that there's a number of concerns voiced about the greenway and we're all talking about behavior issues. Myself, lots of us can bike it, but 30 miles an hour if we wanted to on the greenway. I 100% support the city council's adding signage to basically define acceptable behaviors on natural surface and on greenways.
Three-minute limit is over. The next speaker is Alan Henry. No response from Mr. Henry. The next speaker is Ken Porter.
My name is Ken Porter. My wife and I live on St. John Road, which is the old road on Mill Mountain. And we're fortunate to be surrounded by greenways with the Crystal Spring Trail in front, the Mill Mountain Greenway behind. And we are at the start of the Monument Trail. So we love seeing all the people out on the city's greenways and trails. I'm encouraging the city to allow e-bikes, Class 1-type bikes, on the mountain biking trails of Mill Mountain Park, which I have enjoyed biking on for almost 30 years now. Ever since I had a major heart attack in 1996, I have mountain biked as a way to stay in shape and enjoy getting out into nature. Technological improvements in mountain biking are continuous and aimed at making biking more comfortable and enjoyable. The pedal assist on an e-bike is yet another improvement riders can choose to have and the city should welcome Class 1 e-bike riders. Two years ago, before I owned an e-bike, I was chugging along, climbing the Ridgeline Trail on my way to the top of Mill Mountain and my heart went into VTAC, a very serious issue. I did not ride a year after that because I feared a recurrence may occur. A fellow biker suggested I look into e-bikes. I purchased one and now I confidently ride without the fear of causing my heart to go into VTAC again. This amazing technology monitors my heart rate and the app tells my e-bike to gradually provide more assistance to my pedaling when my heart rate exceeds a preset safe level, such as when I have to climb a steep section on the trail. When I'm riding within my heart safe limits, the e-bike stops providing assistance so that I can get the exercise I want to get. It really is a great use of technology as it only provides pedaling assistance when my heart needs the assistance to keep within safe limits. Today, motorized vehicles have not been allowed on trails and rightly so. These were powered by a motor and controlled by a throttle, such as motorcycles. Class 1 e-bikes do have an electric motor, but they do not have a throttle. The motor on an e-bike only assists in the pedaling of the bike. of the bike, and if you're not pedaling, the motor provides no power. The rider is able to set the amount of assistance when it is provided and much more. E-bikes can cause no more wear on trails than standard mountain bikes, and the assistance is speed-limited. I have mine set at 11 miles an hour. Downhill speeds are not affected by a motor. That is determined by the ability of the rider. So, I hope people will look at e-bikes with an open mind and consider that we are all not at the same level of physical ability, yet we all may very well share the same love of the outdoors. It's great to live in a city that offers great trail riding within the city limits. Please continue promoting our parks and encourage outdoor activity every way you can. E-bikes are yet another way to get people outside. Please improve accessibility to more people by allowing these e-bikes on our trails. Thank you.
The next speaker, Josh Nolan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for letting me be part of this discussion on e-bike use on our greenways. I believe all classes of electric-assist bicycles should be allowed on the Roanoke Greenway. I know a lot of other people are talking today and will have touchpoints on a lot of other points, so I'll just speak on my personal experience with this issue. E-bikes for me come down to ride quality. It makes cycling more accessible and more enjoyable for more riders. This pertains to riders who aren't comfortable on traditional bikes or aren't able to pedal a bike without assistance. For some, being able to get exercise on the Greenway is the most comfortable and safest option. I think of riders like my 60-year-old mother, who needs to use an electric-assist bike because of a back injury she incurred. She doesn't feel comfortable on the streets with traffic, but would still like to be able to ride her bike. All in all, allowing e-bikes provides a safe place for people like my mom to enjoy getting exercise in a way that wouldn't otherwise be an option to her. And yeah, that's it. Thank you so much.
The next speaker, Beth Oates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I strongly encourage you to permit all classes of e-bikes on our local greenways and trail systems. I know numerous speakers tonight have discussed and intend to discuss facts about e-bikes to demystify them for people unfamiliar with them, and I hope that this alleviates some of the concerns you all might have regarding safety, trail damage, and potential nuisance to other users. So, I'd briefly just like to share my story about why I have such strong personal feelings about permitting e-bikes on greenways and trails of Roanoke. My experience with e-bikes came out of necessity. When I got pregnant in 2019, I thought I'd have to give up my love for cycling. Prior to getting pregnant, my partner and I utilized our bikes in place of our car as much as possible, including e-biking to work from our home at that time, which was in southeast Roanoke City, to Salem once per week, much to the chagrin and fear of my coworkers. I never had any interest or need for an e-bike, and I was so lucky. But when I got pregnant, I was really determined to keep biking as long as I comfortably could, and I made it about four months. And at that point, I thought I had to hang it up. But I finally caved and I tried out an e-bike, and that e-bike allowed me to continue biking well into my third trimester. In fact, at almost seven months pregnant, I was still able to ride up Mill Mountain with the assistance of an e-bike, and I kept it on eco the whole time. We had our son in February, and motherhood, particularly in a pandemic, has been wonderful, but at times overwhelming, adventure. Now that I'm back at work full-time, every second that I have to be with my son is really critical for me. So, once again, I resigned myself to giving up my bike until he's old enough for a traditional seat on one of our bikes. Honestly, this was really crushing for me, and my mom guilt completely prevents enjoying my bike. So, once again, along came an e-bike to save my sanity. We invested in an e-cargo bike, which allows us to securely fasten our son's car seat into the cargo area rear-facing, of course, which means he's facing myself or his dad, whoever's riding the cargo bike at that moment. He's not quite four months old, but I swear you can see the look of pure joy on his face when he's cruising along on the bike. And I say cruising because that's what we're doing. I assure you, I am substantially faster on my road bike than I am on our e-bike. Motherhood, I've come to realize, is all about sacrifices, but having this e-bike has allowed me to regain my wheels and enrich the experiences that we can have as a family. I will note that while we do, out of necessity, take our son on city streets in the e-bike, it is not our preference, given that most of our streets do not provide bike lanes. We rely on the Greenway system to be our primary corridor for safe travel with our son. I'm actually a prosecutor in the valley, and as such, I had a front-row seat to how common traffic fatalities or severe injuries are. So, until we have better, safer infrastructure for bikers on our city streets, I think it's wholly unfair to ban e-bikes, which increase accessibility to many more users. And we're not just talking, you know, people in their 60s. It's me, a 32-year-old woman who just wants to have a good time with my family and use a bike as an alternate form of transportation. And we need a safe corridor to do that, and right now, that's our Greenway. Thank you so much.
The next speaker, Roger Holenbach.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Mayor and members of Roanoke City Council, my name is Roger Holenbach, and I'm the president of Pathfinders for Greenways, the nonprofit organization associated with the Greenways in the Roanoke region. I've been on the Greenways Commission for over 15 years and was the executive director of the Western Virginia Land Trust when conservation easements were placed on Mill Mountain and Carvins Cove by Roanoke City Council. I've also been president of the Roanoke Appalachian Trail Club, was a board member for many years. Since retirement, most of these signed me out with the midweek crew, building and maintaining natural surface trails in the Roanoke region. I'm speaking tonight as a concerned citizen and not for any of these organizations, as the issue of Roanoke City permitting motorized bicycles on Roanoke City Greenways and Trails has happened too quickly for our boards to react and develop a consensus in the face of COVID-19 and its resultant meeting restrictions. For our aging population, and I must include myself in this group, and those with limited disabilities, who want to remain active and feel the need for an assist to get to and from our valley's paved greenways, I personally see no problem with class 1 e-bikes, as they assist the peddler in a top speed of approximately 18 miles an hour, which while too fast for some congested sections of the Greenways, is a speed consistent with a fast bicycle rider on flat ground. I'm going to allow the users to enjoy our valley's many-marked bike lanes on city, county, Vinton, and Salem streets as well. Permitting faster e-bikes with throttles, class 2 and 3 e-bikes, will ultimately require speed limits and result enforcement issues to keep our Greenways safe. That said, it is a slippery slope from allowing class 1 e-bikes to allowing class 2 and class 3 e-bikes and e-scooters and e-skateboards, and worst of all, e-mountain bikes, all of which are e-motorized. E-mountain bikes are often just stealth dirt bikes. They are often advertised as such and should not be permitted on our natural surface single-track, multi-use trails we have built on Mill Mountain and Carvins Cove Natural Preserve. These hand-built trails are fragile and will not be sustainable under use by high-powered, fast, and heavier e-mountain bikes. These bikes can go uphill at downhill speeds and are heavier and are much faster than most pedal-powered mountain bikes. Go online and look at the YouTube videos. They are quite quiet motocross bikes. Several brands advertise speeds up to 50 miles per hour, cool, but not safe on multi-use shared trails with hikers, horseback riders, and slower pedal-powered mountain bikers on our twisty, three-foot-wide trails in the woods. So, to conclude, while class 1 e-bikes may one day have a place on our valley's paved greenways, I highly recommend that you maintain the existing no-motorized vehicle policy on our valley's paved greenways and especially on our natural surface trails for at least another year to see how permitting e-bikes plays out in other communities. Thank you for listening to my comments and concerns.
The next speaker is Ashley Seaward.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Greetings, city council members. Thank you for giving me the time to speak today. My name's Ashley Seaward, and I'm here commenting on behalf of People for Bikes. We are a national advocacy group that works for better policies and infrastructure for bike riding. We strive to make bike riding a safer and more inclusive activity for everyone, including our 43,000 individual supporters in Virginia. People for Bikes supports the adoption of allowing class 1, 2, and 3 e-bikes on Roanoke's greenways and trails as recommended by Roanoke's Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. There are 27 states across the country that have passed e-bike laws similar to Virginia's. We support improved e-bike access in Roanoke as similar rules to that at the state will make riding an e-bike easier to understand for residents and visitors and will help establish Roanoke as an outdoor destination in Virginia. E-bikes are a modern and growing technology that makes bike riding a more inclusive form of recreation and transportation for all. This is because they allow for everyone to join in on the fun of bike riding regardless of age or physical or cognitive abilities. E-bikes are similar to bicycles in the way that they are made, sold, and used, and are simply just bicycles with a boost. Please allow Roanoke to join the rest of the country in embracing the benefits that e-bikes have to offer by allowing all classes of e-bikes on Greenways. Thank you for your time, and I hope you consider this proposal.
The next speaker, Harry Friedy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I appreciate your time. As a former police officer, I can say to you that we're not talking about a motorcycle. We're not talking about a motor scooter. We're not talking about a moped. We're talking about a bicycle that has a very small motor with a battery. I recently purchased an e-bike myself because, quite frankly, that was the only way for me to be able to get out and ride here in Roanoke. I moved here a few years ago for family reasons and also because of the reputation of this city. I found it very disappointing to discover that e-bikes currently are not allowed, but encouraged by the General Assembly's action. And I would urge the city council to allow class 1 and class 2 and perhaps class 3 e-bikes on the greenways and trails. A lot of commentary that I've heard tonight sounds very much like we just don't want something new on our precious territory. Well, if I'm paying taxes, then it's my precious territory as well. Several of the speakers this evening have hit on a very sensitive topic, and that is the behavior of everyone on the trail. In my career, I have seen regular bicyclists who behave irresponsibly. I have seen joggers behave irresponsibly. I've seen families with children and dogs behave irresponsibly. It's not fair to exempt a group of people because of the actions of many. I would urge you all to consider this and realize that we're doing nothing but enhancing Roanoke's reputation and the ability of its citizens to enjoy everything here. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
The next speaker, Kyle Enman.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I have been exploring by mountain bike, the trails and backcountry of Virginia's Blue Ridge for 30 years. I've created races and events that showcase the region's public trail riches. And as my son mentioned earlier, you know, one of those races is Creature from Carvins Cove, which at one time was not something that, I mean, that was prohibited and was not going to be allowed, because it took me literally 25 years to make that happen. I was at the forefront to expand recreational use to include mountain bikes, hikers, and horse riders on the vast trails of Carvins Cove. Today, following the repeal of those prohibitions 20 years ago, the cove is the crown jewel of Roanoke's evolution into the premier outdoor destination. Now, a new opportunity. Virginia joins 22 states who have adopted similar legislation thus far, and that is thus far key on that. Data supports that e-bikers do not create unusual problems even on the crowded public trails like Boulder and Golden, Colorado. E-bikes have already been used in trails at Carvins Cove, Mill Mountain, and elsewhere for a long time despite the prohibition. Mr. Michael Clark has stated no conflict incidents reported despite known use of e-bikes on these trails. Class 1 e-bikes are designed to blend with traditional e-bikes. Class 1 e-bikes behave, handle, and look exactly like regular bikes. All e-mountain bikes offered in the U.S. by major manufacturers are class 1, and class 1 is the only option. Our area trails are amazing, but also amazingly hard. E-bikes make tough, longer backcountry rides possible, Carvins Cove and Mill Mountain included. These bikes let this old guy ride with my 26-year-old son, as he mentioned earlier. They allow folks who might otherwise be physically unable to ride and enjoy trails also emphasize several ways. If you rule against the law, Roanoke will be the outlier, as many places Bedford, Franklin County, Harrisonburg, Fairfax, and a ton of others are open to e-technology. More e-bikes are coming to the trails. Enforcement will be difficult, expensive, and tedious, because e-mountain bikes look like traditional bicycles. E-mountain bikes behave and handle like traditional bicycles. Furthermore, e-mountain bike technology does not compromise public safety or cause extra harm. In America's east coast, mountain biking capital, let's move forward by following the guidance provided by our state legislature and the Roanoke Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Thank you.
The next speaker, Michael McElroy.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, can you hear me?
Yeah, Michael.
Thank you all for the opportunity to be heard tonight, and thank you for your service to the community, and it's been a long evening. I'm speaking in my capacity as the executive director of the Western Virginia Water Authority, and I'd ask you to maintain the ban on e-bikes at the Carvins Cove Natural Reserve until we've had an opportunity to study this issue a bit more. This legislation was a bit of a surprise. As I think most of you all know, the water authority and city work jointly to manage the cove, and we'd like the opportunity to really take a look at this issue a little deeper, coordinate with city staff, look at and see what kind of trail improvements or other items that might be needed. And I would just say, you know, what's the rush? I mean, just listening to the comments here tonight, there's a number of opinions on both sides of this issue, and I would say let's just take the time to make a good decision, and in the meantime, let's keep the ban in place, do our due diligence, and then decide what specifications for trails might be needed, site distances, signs, things like that, so that we keep our trail system safe and usable by everybody. So, again, in summary, I'd like you to keep the ban at Carvins Cove Natural Reserve. Thank you.
The next speaker, Barbara Leach.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, and thank you for your service to our community in these difficult times. I wanted to go on the record as being in favor of allowing e-bikes, certainly class 1 and class 2. I think we have a major misunderstanding in what an e-bike is. I get a little upset when I hear people call them motorbikes, and I don't think they're in the same class as scooters and mopeds and small motorcycles. It is an assistive device, and I am a senior rider in the same category as the doctor that spoke and said that most of our trails were flat and that anybody should be able to ride them. Well, unfortunately, my experience has not been that. There are a lot of areas here that are beyond my capability, and I'm quickly losing my ability to use the areas. So, I feel that the e-bikes would help me personally, help a lot of people in the community, would make a lot of areas accessible to people who don't have driver's licenses. And is my time up? I hear a ding.
No.
Okay, okay. I also think that it might be an opportunity for some of the businesses that sell bikes, because you don't see a lot of them sold. I'm sure you can order them special order, but I think that might be another possibility for business in the area. I don't agree that you need extra signage and extra site distances and that you can't control the speed. It is an assistive device. It will go as fast as your ability to make it go. And, you know, as you progress in age, that's not going to be very fast. It's a heavy device. It is agile enough to be safe. So, if you take away the speed factor... So if you take away the speed factor and there's really no pollutants to speak of, then I don't understand what the objection could be. Those that are out tearing up trails are people with bad behaviors. It's not the e-bike that's the problem. Thank you.
The next speaker, Barbara Durk.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Barbara.
Okay. Thank you very much for holding this public hearing on General Assembly 2020 legislation that will become effective July 1. That it's not often that I ask the mayor and members of Roanoke City Council to not do anything, but I think this General Assembly action on House Bill 533 and Senate Bill 871 addressing electric power-assisted bicycles will be a benefit to our community. That I believe in the power of N, vitamin N, vitamin nature, to restore our souls and heal our bodies both physically and mentally. The benefits of more people walking and bicycling for transportation, recreation, and healthy lifestyle include improved air quality, reduced traffic congestion, and improved physical health, causing fewer cases of diabetes and heart problems. Everyone should be able to get outside by using assisted devices. I am so old. How old are you? Well, I am so old that I and my friends are beginning to need some physical assistance on the Roanoke Hills. In Virginia, Roanoke is the only community where I am not allowed, the only community where I'm not allowed to ride an electric pedal-powered bicycle on greenways. On Virginia State Park Trails, New River Trail, Virginia Creeper Trail, Capitol Trail all allow me access with electric-assisted bicycles. I can ride National Park Trails. I can ride the Greater Allegheny Passage. I'm just saying that other places I can, why can I not in my hometown of Roanoke? Please allow me and my friends to properly access Roanoke Valley Greenway and Trails. I know there are signs that say cyclists ride at safe speed, and I know that there's user conflicts on the greenways. But Greenway and Trail users can learn to share, and the issue of electric bicycles is not part of the problem. We need to find a solution to shared use on the greenways. We need to teach proper walking and bicycling in Roanoke City Schools. We need to provide education and enforcement to make greenways and trails safe for all users. Do not discriminate against old people. I'm asking you to do nothing, and that no action will put into effect what Roanoke needs to do, and that's allow the General Assembly legislation become effective July 1. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jay Galden.
My name's Jay Galden. I'm an avid mountain biker and an avid electric mountain biker. I've had an electric mountain bike for a couple of years now, Class 1 e-bike. I'm also a coach for Star City Cycling, so I'm on Mill Mountain quite often as well as Carvins Cove. You know, most of what I've heard in opposition tonight to the e-bikes is based on the lack of education. And I can understand that because before I bought my first electric mountain bike a couple of years ago, I was an opponent of electric bikes. And that boiled down to the fact that I didn't know what they were about. I just thought they were electric motorcycles, and that's not the case at all. So I've educated myself now. It's important to distinguish the three different classes of electric bicycles because the e-bike term is a catch-all, and it's not fair because the bikes are very different. So the Class 1 electric mountain bike, it can only go up to 20 miles per hour with the electric assistance. If you don't pedal, it doesn't go. So the class, and it can't go any faster than a regular bicycle. At 20 miles per hour, it cuts out. The Class 2 electric mountain bike, I do disagree with that bike because it is throttle. It's more like an electric moped, although it cannot exceed 20 miles per hour, just like the Class 1. And then the Class 3 is maximum speed 28 miles per hour, and it is pedal-assist like the Class 1. So the Class 1 electric mountain bike cannot go over 20 miles per hour. I've heard people talk about, they're worried about the noise. I would say that no one can hear the electric motor on it except for the rider and maybe somebody within a foot or two. They are low-impact with regard, they do not have the power to spin out and take off like a motorcycle or a dirt bike. They only weigh about 15 pounds, 20 pounds on average, more than the regular conventional pedal bicycle. And we have riders out there that weigh in excess of the average rider, so that's a non-issue. I'd like to say if Roanoke is going to market itself as the mountain biking destination on the East Coast, and we're going to be the purveyors of the Silver IMBA designation, then we need to walk the talk. Lastly, I'd like to say I've heard a lot of people say that we need to take time to study this. I just see those as delay tactics. We don't need any new trails or changes to accommodate the Class 1 e-bike. They fit right in, right where the conventional pedal bike does. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker, Aaron Garland.
This opportunity to talk, I'm here with my seven-year-old, Fiona Garland, and so I'll try to keep it brief. It's past your bedtime. I've used a bicycle as my primary mode of transportation for about a decade, so my perspective comes from someone who relies on a bicycle for personal transportation. I've got two children, ages four and seven years old. And last year, June 2019, I purchased an e-bike kit, and it was installed by Downshift Bicycles on my long-tail cargo bike. To give you an idea what that looks like, it's a regular bicycle with an extra-long rear rack that helps me to transport not only myself but my two children and sometimes even a friend on the back rack of the bike. The electric bike system has allowed me to extend my range. With a large, heavy cargo bike, very difficult to ride up hills or for long distances without the electric assist. And so now I'm able to go places like the Boys and Girls Club where my daughter attends after school on Ninth Street in Southeast, and I can access it from a home in southwest part of the city, along with several other locations that weren't possible for me to reach previously. The Greenway is the safest route for me between the Boys and Girls Club, and also my daughters appreciate that we pass by Blue Cow Ice Cream on the way home. So I'd like Roanoke City Council to consider that the Greenway was built using BDOT, in part, BDOT funding, and that is a safe route for those who depend on bicycle as their primary mode of transportation. E-bikes are a practical, affordable, environmentally-friendly transportation option, and they make it possible for normal people to carry heavy loads like kids or for those with physical limitations to transport themselves or to participate in cycling as sport and leisure. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
The next speaker, Stuart Lamanna.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Stuart Lamanna. I'm on the board of BROCC. BROCC stands for Blue Ridge Off-Road Cyclists. We are the local chapter of IMBA. And I'm speaking today in just regards to the natural surface trails, say, at the Carvins Cove, and the impact that Class 1 e-bikes have. IMBA has done a comparison of environmental impact study between Class 1 e-bikes, regular bikes, and found that there's not a significant difference in soil erosion. So it's my personal recommendation that they be allowed on our Cove trails. Thank you.
The next speaker, Ken McLeod.
Hi. I want to thank the mayor and members of the city council for providing this forum. In my day job as policy director of the League of American Bicycleists, I get to see what many communities in the United States are doing related to bicycling policy. Roanoke has been recognized as a bronze bicycle-friendly community for several years now, and there are over 480 communities currently recognized for bicycling through the Bicycle Friendly Community Program. In our Bicycle Friendly Community Program application, we ask about restrictions on e-bikes. The majority of applicants, more than 90%, report no restrictions on e-bikes. Allowing e-bikes is based on their experience and evidence. As many people have noted, the safety of treating e-bikes is the same as standard bicycles and the life-changing possibilities that they allow. I'd like to note the very personal experiences shared by the many people who use e-bikes in Roanoke and the lack of stories about dangerous incidents with e-bikes raised in this meeting. I believe that the city should allow e-bikes on greenways by adopting Alternative 1, allowing all classes everywhere. Thank you.
And our last speaker, Wayne Wilcock.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, thank you for your service and thank you for this opportunity to comment on the issue of e-bike use in the city and specifically on greenway trails. Allow me to make just one straightforward justification for allowing e-bikes on greenway trails in the city. Other speakers already have touched on many other angles, and clearly, this is a rather complex issue. As a brief introduction, I am a landscape architect specializing professionally in active transportation, which is a buzzword for transportation modes such as walking and cycling. I've lived in southwest Virginia since 1978, except for nine years serving the city of Virginia Beach as its full-time bikeways and trails planner. So here we go. Greenway trails are often seen primarily as recreational amenities, but they function also as components of the larger transportation network, and they make invaluable connections across the city, especially as the greenway system continues to grow. People who want to ride bikes or walk but who do not want to compete with traffic like motor vehicles can use greenways and trails to travel significant distances and get from one part of the city to another. People have diverse reasons for wanting to ride bikes, for reducing their carbon footprint, for exercise and the health benefits of riding instead of sitting in a car, for the simple enjoyment of riding a bike, to save a little money, or because they're too young to have a driver's license, or because they can't afford to put gas into the car they can't afford to buy. Similarly, people will have different reasons for wanting to use an e-bike to get around. It can help them overcome health issues such as knee or hip problems. It can allow them to get up and down hills more easily, or frankly, to get up and down hills at all. An e-bike will allow them to arrive at their destination with less exertion and sometimes with less sweat. Finally, an e-bike can help them keep up with friends and family. Greenways are valuable connectors for people to get across the city, and e-bikes are valuable tools for many people to get around the city. Greenways plus e-bikes make excellent sense as a transportation alternative. And as the last speaker, by the way, by my count of the emails, Facebook commenters, and speakers, almost 60 have been for e-bikes on greenways and about 30 have been against. Thank you very much for your time and your attention.
All right. Thank you, and thank all of the speakers and those that wrote emails. So Madam Clerk, I'm assuming that's, those are all the citizens wishing to be heard.
Yes.
All right. Okay. With that being said, I will close the podium, and now recognize that it's your turn to just explain some of the alternatives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and the public still with us. I would also like to point out to you that in the chamber with me tonight is Michael Clark, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and my colleague, Barbara, who worked on this and on all the options that are available to you. I would point, I want to point out that on Friday, the five alternatives that we provided to council were also posted on the city clerk's website so that folks could access that, and it sounds as if some folks did. The measure that you have before you is the most restrictive permitted under state code, and that would ban all e-bikes on all shared paths and on trails. Alternative 1 in your package would allow e-bikes everywhere. That is also similar to alternative number 5. In fact, the impact of 1 and 5 are identical. That is, e-bikes would be allowed on all shared paths and all greenways, excuse me, and all trails. The difference is that Alternative 1 places all of the state code requirements with regard to e-bikes in city code, so that if at a later date council decided to take some steps to regulate e-bikes in some manner, it could do so without having to go through this entire process of amending city code. Both alternatives, as well as all the other alternatives in the original bill, original ordinance, all have an amendment to Chapter 24 to clarify that city policy, city resolutions, and actions by city managers over several years have allowed bicycles on greenways. We have, we recommended that you adopt that at a minimum, so if you don't want to take any other action, then you would adopt Alternative 5. Alternative 2 bans only Class 3 e-bikes on greenways and trails. It would allow Class 1 and Class 2 on greenways and trails. Alternative 3 would ban Class 3 on greenways and trails and also ban Class 1 and Class 2 on trails only. Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes would be allowed on greenways. Class 4, excuse me, Alternative 4 is bans all e-bikes from trails, Class 2 and Class 3 from greenways, and allows only Class 1. Those are the five alternatives that were posted and provided to you in discussions with council member White Boyd. We do have an Alternative 6 that would ban all e-bikes from trails and ban Class 2 from greenways, but allow Class 1 and Class 3 on greenways only. I think those are the permutations that you could have. One issue that we've had discussions at staff is enforcement. This is, the more complicated that you get with regard to regulating e-bikes will require some enforcement action by presumably Parks and Recreation in coordination with our police department. I don't know, with all the other discussions that you've had, not only today but in the recent past, that that should be a factor that you should have. I don't know with all the other discussions that you've had, not only today, but in the recent past, that that should be a factor that you should have. Michael Clark did, excuse me. For your consideration, did talk with folks throughout the Commonwealth that Ann Parks and Rec with regard to that. He sent out requests, he did give get responses back from about 28 various departments. Many were surprised that this legislation had been enacted. And so they were making some reaction to it. About 45% of the respondents, 13 respondents said that they planned prohibition. The others had 38% had some partial prohibition, but really had not finalized what they planned to do. And there were five localities that were not, weren't decided at this time. If you were just procedurally, there's one other issue that if you decide to, we do have a technical amendment that I'll bring to your attention. It appears in section 20 dash 166, the second paragraph, and looking at the original ordinance that you have, it's on page six. There's a reference to state code 46.2-904. That preference is not modified by mentioning state code. Although earlier in the section is a reference to state code, but we would recommend that you clarify that section by simply adding state code before the section symbol in that paragraph. One other comment that I received from council prior to today was from council member Best Pitch had questioned the use of the terms seemingly interchangeably between highway and street. The reason for that, and we would probably clarify it throughout city code, and there are lots of issues that we are looking at to try to get streamline our city code. State code dealing with e-bikes and generally lots of transportation issues uses the term highway. And that means street in chlor includes a street. The city uses the term street in our general provisions of our city code. We have a defined term street and that includes highway. So we're not, we are not recommending any change at this time because there were several sections that would require that. We think that while a little bit redundant or it does both, they both refer to the same issue and and the same process, so that we don't think there's an issue with regard to that. But with that said, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have with with what we're doing here tonight. As I said, Michael is here if you would like some of his expertise with regard to that. I'm sure he would come up and join me.
All right. Members of council, I'll just take it as you raise your hand. I can see you, those who want to comment or have any questions. Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis.
The good, the good news is it's so late that my comments will be really, really brief this time. Because I don't know that I can talk much longer. I guess my main question, Dan, if you wouldn't mind asking Michael if he could come up is I would love to know personally as the person who we entrust to take care of our greenways and take care a lot. And I know we have a lot of volunteers who help with greenways and trail maintenance as well. But from a city perspective, Michael, you are kind of direct liaison to to the trails. So my question for you is, do you foresee any concerns with either trail maintenance or bicycle safety and or any kind of enforcement with regards to e-bikes?
So I can only go on what I know and what's been reported to us, which one of the speakers said earlier that we have no reported instances of accidents related to e-bikes, no increased trail damage that that we're aware of. So based on that, along with folks saying that e-bikes are already using our trails and greenways, I can only assume that there wouldn't be any increased trail damage. Again, I haven't seen it for myself. I can only go on what's been reported and what's been told to us. One thing I can tell you is that you polled my staff and it reflects pretty much what we heard tonight. It's it's right down the middle for and against. So we were really looking forward to to hearing with the general public. But again, we've had, so that's what I can speak to.
Thank you. I hear the concerns about safety. I echo those concerns. Where I'm at is that I have had the opportunity to ride an e-bike and I've had the opportunity to watch my dad ride an e-bike, who just celebrated his 84th birthday over the weekend. And I'm certainly not concerned about my dad going out on the greenway and speeding past people on a, on an, on an e-bike. I am concerned that without a motor assist, that he may not be out and be as active as he could be with one. So hearing the comments and concerns tonight, you know, made the entire situation that much more difficult. And as right now for my fellow council members, I am in favor of allowing access to as many people as we can get outside and using our outdoors as as possible. And I do think that there are some folks who who use bikes, e-bikes, because they need access that they don't have on a human powered bike. And I know that my comment just now will outrage a lot of people in the cycling community and a lot of people who I've known for many, many years since my previous life, when I was very much involved in the cycling community on an everyday basis. So I know that this is a very contentious issue and I'm coming at this right now from personal current experience. One of my big concerns with regards to the the weight issue, people tend to bring up the weight of the e-bikes and say that that's going to be something that damages trails. An e-bike weighs probably about 25 more pounds, let's say, than a bike that would not be an electric assist bike. And I can tell you that I personally could gain or lose 25 pounds and it would have the same impact on the trail as riding a bike had 25 more pounds on it. So I do, the the weight issue is not a concern. For me, the speed issue is a concern, but it is not a concern that is specific to e-bikes. It's a concern in general. And I think we need to be having a speed conversation separate from the e-bike conversation that we're having right now. So that's it for me for now. Thank you all.
Ms. Price.
Okay, sorry, I have to find my unmute. Since Michael Clark is still there and and first of all, I do want to thank everyone who had the tenacity and the patience to voice your, your comments and your opinions tonight. I commend you. And I certainly did learn an awful lot. So my question to to Mr. Clark, how are problems, accidents, since bicycle, regular bicycles are currently allowed on the greenways? So how are problems, accidents, or people in general who may abuse or not show courtesy? How are those issues reported currently and how are they handled?
The vast majority of the issues that we have are reported either through citizens or through our greenway ambassadors. They are volunteers that that walk several sections of our greenway trails and they will act as liaisons to the the department from users on the greenway trail. So as they come across people who have been in an accident or perhaps are not displaying appropriate etiquette, they'll inform them, let them know about the rules of the greenway, give them tips and suggestions and, but that's how they're typically reported now.
Okay, thank you. I think it's important that we keep that in mind as well. Because I must say, I am leaning towards in favor of of allowing the usage. And then I guess my, that leads me into my second question. So if we do go forth with making this possible, I, I don't want to make the assumption that if there are any problems that are incurred down the road, then we would have the ability to come back and address them.
Yes, that you would have the ability to revisit the issue later on.
Okay, that, thank you. I appreciate those answers.
All right. All right, it's called, I'm trying to get my screen, I lost my screen there. Bismarck, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to reiterate what Ms. Price just said. Thank, thanks to everyone who spoke tonight and and shared your experience and your perspective. That's been very helpful to me and I think to all of us. We are changing as a city in a lot of ways. And one of the major ways that we're changing is how we approach transportation, accessibility to transportation, different modes. We truly want to be a multimodal city in terms of transportation. And I think that's critical. I'm, I agree that mobility is a major factor and we've heard stories about that tonight regarding e-bikes. How so many people have greater access for health reasons, for commuting reasons, to be able to get out and not only be outside, but get to their workplace, exercise in ways that they have not been able to exercise before. All of those things are really important to me and I think to a lot of people. I think that I hear the concerns about trail erosion and trail wear as well as greenway and appreciated the perspectives about design and curves and that sort of thing. Again, I think that that's something that we can monitor, that we have to take a look at. We can't do that unless we allow the capability for e-bikes to be present on our greenways and trails. So I, I support back at my notes here, I support alternative one, which is allowing all classes of e-bikes everywhere. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Councilwoman Trish Redboy, you had your hand up earlier. I missed it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, like Ms. Price said, I, my hat's off to all of the folks that lined up to speak tonight. You know, that was a, that was a long wait and I appreciate it. I appreciate all the pros and the cons. I actually ride a bike, I walk the trails and I had an opportunity to ride an e-bike. And before I had the opportunity to actually ride one, when I, Mr. Clark first did his presentation, in my mind, what I saw was getting on a bike, hitting, you know, just hitting the throttle and riding off like a motorcycle. That is not the case. You have to pedal. And if you don't pedal, that bike is not going anywhere. So I think for those folks who have never ridden one, I think they can see what I saw was, you know, getting on one and riding it like a scooter or a motorcycle. I just wanted to say to those folks, if you would give it an opportunity like I did, you will find that the only difference is basically the down tube that's a little bit bigger and where the battery is. But, you know, I was, I was just expecting a whole lot more. I was expecting to, you know, kind of fly off into the sunset. But unless you have that mobility and that strength to do that, you cannot do that. So my mind changed over the weekend when I had the opportunity to ride one. And so I would certainly be in favor. I think it's a good thing for older people. I'm not there yet, but one day I may be there and would like to continue to ride and that would be an alternative for me. So I thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Best Pitch, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too appreciate everyone who weighed in on this, whatever their opinion was. It puts us in a great position to make so many people unhappy. Because the people who don't want any e-bikes anywhere are not going to be happy if we allow e-bikes. The people who want all the e-bikes everywhere are not going to be happy if we don't allow them. And the people who want them some places and not others are going to be unhappy no matter what. So this is why it's so much fun to be in the position of making these decisions, especially around issues. You know, in all my years of campaigns for city councils and in between my own campaigns, watching other candidates campaign for city council, I've never seen this on anybody's campaign literature. I've never seen anybody run on this issue. And I really say that to make the point that it's not always the most important thing to think about what somebody's positions on the issue. What's important is to think about how people listen, how they cooperate, how they look for consensus and how they try to work together to come to important decisions. Mr. Clark, since you're still there, what I would like to ask you is, how would you see that the greenway might have been designed differently if we had had in mind from the very beginning the different types of bicycles, traditional bikes, e-bikes, what have you, and the usage that we've gotten? Would there be any, anything that comes to your mind as to what we might have tried to do, design and engineer differently from the beginning?
Sure, there are, there are several things that that we could do differently, looking in hindsight. And of course, if space and money were no issue at all, we could do a lot of things. We would ultimately make the path larger, but not in whatever, wider to accommodate all the different users that we have. When people have the space to do it, many of the shared paths now are much wider than than ours. Some of them get up to 16 feet wide. Most of ours and most section are around 10 feet wide. We would, and not necessarily related to to e-bikes, but just the the general speed of bikes on our greenway trails now, whether they're analog or electric. We would take greater consideration of sight lines and some of the safety precautions that we could put in place to curb speed, which some of those things we can do now. We can do the equivalent of traffic calming as well as increased signage, as many of the speakers said tonight. So there are some steps that that we can take to help curb some of this. But I'd say first and foremost, we would probably look at making them wider if we had it to do all over again. But we are limited in most, most places by the amount of space available to put the trailer in.
Thank you. I know there are some localities around the country that have done things like a lane for bikes going one direction, a separate lane for bikes going the other direction, and then the third lane for walkers and joggers and runners and and all that sort of thing. And so maybe that would have been something to consider. You know, I, I, I know several people who spoke this evening personally. And I know that some of them have very serious and ongoing direct experience with bikes, with trails, with trail maintenance, with all those things. And it would have been wonderful for me personally if they had all agreed. But they didn't. Even the people who have been out there the most, who've been involved the most and worked the hardest on some of these issues did not agree. And I really have a lot of concern about our ability to enforce whatever we decide. And I think that as I believe Ms. Price. And I think that as I believe Ms. Price asked earlier. If we do something now and we decide it wasn't right, then we can come back and change it later on and figure out how we, how we make it right. But I think that regardless of what we say or do here tonight, people are going to use all three classes. Wherever they can find an opportunity to use it and who's going to be out there to enforce it. So from that perspective, I tend to agree with the Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Thank you to my fellow Roanoke citizens for showing up tonight and expressing your concerns and your thoughts about this matter. We hope this is not the last time that we see you in council chambers expressing your concerns about all things in the city of Roanoke. It's been great to have such a turnout. In considering all the alternatives before us, I appreciate all the arguments that were put forth. I've had the opportunity to ride an e-bike. They're a lot of fun. In terms of the issue of speed, I have no interest in sustaining any kind of speed at 20 miles per hour. So my experience of an e-bike is that it does what it is designed to do, which is to assist in allowing mobility and accessibility over difficult terrain that may not be as easily accessed if it was exclusively human powered. I agree with Councilman Best Pitch that the ability to regulate the minutia of which bike in which place is unlikely to happen. And so I agree with my fellow council members who who state alternative one or alternative five, which are essentially the same thing to allow all classes, all places. Thank you.
All right, I was about to have a chance. I want to, if not, I want to contact. I want to ask Dan if he would come back.
Yes, sir.
Dan, I like Michael, Michael B.'s comment early about just, just give the city an opportunity to look up some things even longer. Can you tell me the difference, and I'm reading it, but just define it even more between alternative one and alternative five?
Yes, the different, alternative one amends chapter 20 of city code to put the provisions with regard to e-bikes into city code. The important, the operative section of that code appears on page five of alternative one. Where it specifically provides that electric powered assisted bicycles may be ridden in the city of Roanoke and Carver's Cove Natural Reserve in places where bikes are allowed, including streets, highway, roads, shoulders, bicycle lanes, bicycle or shared paths. Alternative five does not put the state code provisions with regard to e-bikes into city code yet. We thought that if council wanted to adopt or affirmatively state that e-bikes could be used everywhere with the understanding that if experience suggests that changes should be made to the city code, that the foundation, the framework of city code would be in place to do that. Obviously, there may be required a public hearing at that point. If you adopted alternative five, you'd have to adopt everything that's in the first two sections of alternative one and then the restrictions, if that's what you chose. We just thought it was easier to adopt alternative one. And I think that Michael concurs with that as opposed to, and he nodded, as opposed to alternative five. But alternative five is clearly do nothing. And as I mentioned to the newspaper on Friday when asked about it, in very simple terms, it's the default provision. You do nothing and the law takes effect on July 1st. I think a more thoughtful approach to it is to adopt, if you're considering between the two, to adopt one. Because then you have the framework available for you if at some point the issue requires further review. If I can tell you procedurally, Mayor, where you're at is the ordinance has been moved and seconded. The original has been moved and seconded. It's been read, the title has been read. And if you were inclined to substitute alternative one for the pending matter, a motion to amend would be in order to substitute alternative one for the pending measure. That would require a second. The clerk would again read the title, my apologies. And, and then if there were no further discussion, you would vote on, you would then, after that. I would ask you to make the Best Pitch amendment with regard to the state code citation on page six. Have that seconded and then, then you would vote on the final version of alternative one and the measure as amended.
All right, I'm looking on my. Okay, okay. Well, I would. I would move that we do that. I'm in favor.
Well, Mayor, just to clear, I mean, you're the presiding officer, so you could not actually make the motion. But you're obviously can tell us what you're, you're inclined to do and then one of your colleagues can make the motion.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's what I wanted to do. Yeah. If I could make motions, we'd been doing that for a while. We'd be doing it. But I'm inclined to go with alternative one, given that. And so, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis, hands up.
It's okay. I didn't want to interrupt, Mayor Lee. I did just want to say my overarching concern, just so you all know where I stand. I think moving forward, the class two bikes, in my mind, the fact that it's class one, which is pedal assist only. Class two has a throttle, but still has a speed limitation. Class three has no throttle and a higher speed limit. And my overarching concern, honestly, I think the class two bikes are probably more problematic than class one or class three. So I appreciate that if we adopt the alternative one today, that that will allow us to revisit at some point in the future. If the throttle isn't actually causing some issues, because the throttle can be used even without pedaling, which does in my mind creates some additional issues. And I don't like the way the designations have been set up. But I appreciate that the proposal that you're saying you're in agreement with, Mayor Lee, and that Joe has mentioned being in agreement with, alternative one. Would allow us to eventually walk the regulations back if we find that there are some areas and some issues that we need to address in the future. Specifically with those class two bikes. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, just to help us along here. I would move that we amend the motion to substitute alternative one for the pending measure.
All right, you got a second.
Chris White Boy, I second.
Okay.
The clerk will read the title, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon me?
The clerk, I will now read the title.
All right, we, Madam Clerk, can you read the title now?
An ordinance amending and re-erdaining section 20 dash 131 definitions, age of operation, division one generally. Article seven, mopeds, bicycles, and electric powered assisted bicycles of chapter 20. Motor vehicles and traffic of the code of the city of Roanoke as amended, amending and re-erdaining. Articles seven, mopeds, bicycles, and electric powered assisted bicycles of chapter 20. Motor vehicles and traffic by adding a new division five. Electric power assisted bicycles, electric personal assisted mobility devices. Electric personal delivery devices, electrically powered toy vehicles and motorized skateboards or scooter. Article seven, mopeds, bicycles, and electric power assisted bicycles of chapter 20. Motor vehicles and traffic of the city, of the code of the city of Roanoke as amended. And amending and re-erdaining section 24 dash 94. Motor vehicle and bicycles to be operated or ridden only on designated roadways or areas. Article four, parks, chapter 24. Public buildings and property generally of code of the city of Roanoke as amended. In order to implement changes mandated by the general assembly and to ban all classes of electric power assisted bicycles for shared use paths and natural surface trails within the city and Carver's Cove Natural Reserve. Providing for effective dates and dispensing with the second reading of this title by, of this ordinance by title.
Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Dan, our mayor.
Yes, sir.
Dan, can you explain to me why it still includes and to ban all classes?
That, I was just getting that, that's a typo. If you vote in favor of this, you're amending it, I will ask you to make another amendment.
Well, let's not do that. Do we have to do that?
Is it to permit instead of to ban?
It's to permit and then the word from is changed to on.
Can that be received as a friendly amendment to the amendment?
Just to make it clear, I would ask roll call on the original and then I've got three amendments for you to make that are all friendly with regard to this. So the clerk could call the roll.
Right. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance, as amended, is still on second reading. I would ask that a member make a motion to make three amendments. To delete the word ban on page one and insert the word permit or permit. Delete the word on, on page one.
Delete the word from.
From and add the word on. And on page six, section 20 dash 166, second paragraph. Before the section, add the words state code.
Mr. Mayor? To amend the amended measure by substituting the word permit for ban in the title paragraph and substitute the word on for from. And after, it says section 42 dash 904 to insert the words code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Anita Price, second.
All right.
This is second, this requires a roll call?
Yeah. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And now, and that amendment is now made, now the last act is a motion to adopt the measure as the ordinance as amended.
Don't move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you?
Read the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. All right, thank you. And Callahan, where are we now?
You're done with item 86?
All right, so we'll go to the next item then. Which is Is there anything else, Ms. Callahan?
The task force.
Yeah, I'm saying we'll go on to new business. I want to make sure before we go to that, that we got everything situated. Our new business is a resolution to appoint task force members to review the Star City Strong Response Recovery Resilience Framework. Evaluate alternatives and make recommendations to city council for the use of the Star City Strong Recovery Fund to support the recovery and resilience of the community. There's one measure of resolution.
Move the resolution. Second, Anita Price?
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
A resolution appointing the members of the Star City Strong Recovery Fund Task Force and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, just for the benefit, since you were there and I am here and the public is probably watching. Excuse me, I'm going to go see the city manager. Bear with me. The members of the task force that are being considered for appointment tonight are the four citizens at large recommended by the mayor, Pamela Smith, Tommy Page, Jan Keister, Joshua Patrick. The three members, citizens at large recommend or nominated by the vice mayor are Gloria Mans, Andrea Nicklem, and Bethany Lackey. City council gets to appoint 16 members, two from each of the eight groups. They are Chanel Steelman Healthcare Biomedical Research. Antonio Segova Healthcare Biomedical Research. Diane Haley Hospitality Entertainment. Brian Wells Hospitality Entertainment. Kat Pascal, Small Business. Nathan Webster, Small Business. Troy Cook, Manufacturing. Tamea Franco, Manufacturing. Chris Bryant, Outdoor Recreation. Carol Rallett, Outdoor Recreation. Karen Pillis, Vulnerable Populations Nonprofits. Debbie C. Brown, Vulnerable Populations Nonprofits. Ellen Stick, Arts and Culture. Rachel Hopkins, Arts and Culture. Gerald Rhodes, Education. Cheryl Mosley, Education. City manager nominates eight individuals, one from each sector. Cynthia Lawrence, Healthcare Biomedical Research. Landon Howard, Hospitality Entertainment. Joyce Waugh, Small Business. James E. Smith, Senior Manufacturing. Pete Eschelman, Outdoor Recreation. Abby Hamilton, Vulnerable Population Nonprofits. Shaleen Powell, Arts and Culture. Shaleen Powell Arts and Culture, Carol Tarrant Education. The NAACP will be providing its nominee and who, to the task force that will be invited and council will approve that nominee on its session, at its session on July 6th. The Southern Christian Leadership, the Roanoke Chapter of Southern Christian Leadership nominates Minyon Chub Hale as its member. City council appoints Dr. Elda Stanco Downey as the representative from the Latino-Latina community. The Chair of the Youth Services Citizens Board, Ms. Price, nominates Christian Bryant and Brianna Wilson to serve. The measure does also include that you're waiving the residency requirement for Landon Howard, Joyce Wa, Abby Hamilton, Troy Cook, and Brian Wells. Glad to answer any questions. The city manager acknowledges that's what we talked about.
All right. Are there any questions or comments by members of council? Well, I just want to thank everybody for what they did on this. And again, this is Star City Strong Recovery Fund to support the recovery and resilience of the community. So very important work that lies ahead. And we think we have some very qualified citizens here in Roanoke and surrounding area to help us to do and get to a point where we can recover from the ravages of what we've had to deal with with COVID-19 and other things. All right. If there are no questions, I'll ask Cook to call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. All right, we're now down to item C, is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. The city council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response and recommendation or report to council as we may deem appropriate. Based upon Executive Order Number 51 issued by Governor Northam on March 12, 2020, amended Executive Order Number 53 on April 15, 2020, amended 28 to House Bill 29, adopted April 22, 2020, Section 4-0.01G, Chapter 1283, Virginia Acts of Assembly, 2020, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3708.2, a code in Virginia, Section 15.2-1413, ordinance number 41703032720, and Resolution 41704032720. City council will be conducting this regular session of city council by electronic communication means without a quorum of city council physically present in council chambers and without the presence of members of the public in the city council chamber. And in order to afford the citizens an opportunity to provide comments to city council during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster, citizens wishing to address the council during this regular session of city council conducted by electronic communication means we're instructed to sign up by emailing or by calling the city's clerk's office at clerk@roanovaa.gov and call 540-853-2541 by 12 o'clock PM on today, June 15th. Those citizens who have signed up to speak before the council have been provided the Zoom meeting information and will be allowed to join the meeting and address city council by electronic communication means. Madam Cook, do we have any speakers that are still remaining?
Yes, we have one speaker, that is Melanie Crowe.
Okay.
This is Melanie Crowe. Thank you, guys, for waiting so long to hear from me. And I appreciate what you're trying to do to get the city back on track with the COVID-19. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm trying to start a business here in the city right now during this. And since June 15th, we are attempting to get a response from the permit center. And we really have had very little response whatsoever. June 5th, we called them for the first time, heard absolutely nothing until June 10th, when they sent an additional form that we needed to fill out. That was sent back the same day. And since that time, I still have heard nothing as of the end of today. So I really, I understand the need that we can't go into the office and all of that. But in order to get the city running, we need to have our small businesses going. And we can't get our business open because we are unable to access city services. We have called, we have emailed, and just are really having no luck whatsoever. So I know this is not something you guys are directly responsible for, but I really don't know where else to turn at this point. So I have been waiting here for three hours to let you guys know my thoughts on this. I do know that I am not the only one. I've heard other people say that they are getting. I was nice at first, but honestly, the last email that I sent on Wednesday was fairly sarcastic because I'm quite frustrated at this point. But I just wanted to let you guys know where things are for some of us small businesses out here, and I appreciate your time. You guys have a good night.
All right. We'll refer those remarks, your comments, to our city manager and ask him to get back with you and let you know what the status of things are down in the municipal building. We're sorry for the inconvenience that you've had to go through because we want you to get back in business and make sure we do that. All right. Any other comments from anybody else? All right. With that being said, it's been a long, long day. Thank you all for the effort and there being no further business set forth to come before the council. This regular session of city council is hereby adjourned. Thank you.